That are decked out and peaked, so that's good. I guess Barclay and I are going to be holdouts again this, uh, this year, but maybe next year we'll, we'll get the memo. Next Tuesday is Commissioner Harvey's birthday, so happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
I think at this, at this stage in the game, if you're like me, you used to be excited about them. And then you weren't excited, but at some point I've heard that now you just get excited that you get, you made it to another one. So I don't know if you reached that stage yet or not.
I'm excited, just as if they won everyone.
That's good. That's great. That's the right attitude.
This will be fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifty-five plus.
This will be fifty-five. Few years younger than Trace.
Uh, and also I will not be at the next administrative meeting. I think Commissioner, which one of y'all is going to be out? You're going to be out, so it's going to be on the rest of y'all to be here. That way Commissioner Adams can actually lead a meeting this time, so I appreciate, uh, he would appreciate if y'all showed up. Makes for a wonderful experience. Alright, uh...
We will get out on time.
Uh, you will, then.
Absolutely.
Uh, we have two items under awards and presentations today. The first is a recognition for Town of Rehoboth Fire and Rescue. So I'm going to step down. Mayor, I will call you up and please bring with you, um, anybody else you feel needs to be up here.
Your fine panel of gentlemen that you had with you this morning.
He just wanted to bring our fire rescue department up here. Sorry.
Alright.
Um, I did want to say, so you sent me some information.
Yes.
Uh, there's one thousand four hundred and sixteen, one thousand four hundred and sixteen fire departments.
They can volunteer, they can come over, look what you hired us.
So, one thousand four hundred and sixteen fire departments in the state, only fourteen have an ISO rating of one, which is the lowest, which is the best. One of the A1, I don't know if City of Houston has that ISO rating. Rehoboth has an ISO rating of two, two slash two X, so, and what all that means, I don't know what that means. But only fifty-five fire departments in the state have achieved that, that rating. So congratulations, Town of Rehoboth, and I will let you talk about how y'all were able to achieve that and congratulate me.
So we just wanted to commend these guys who have worked extremely hard to make sure that we have risen from a three to an ISO rating of a two. It's been something we've really dedicated as a town to making sure that we reach those goals. A two rating means that we have an extremely fast response time for the size of area that we are. Um, and we've done a lot of things in the Town of Rehoboth with the help of a lot of partners within the county to make sure that we have that going. We've recently gone from being a standalone volunteer to now we're a combo station. The Town of Rehoboth has the fire department underneath our lean, so it ensures us to have twenty-four seven coverage, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Um, we help with retirement for our certified firefighters and our EMS providers. And so it's really just making sure that our area of the county, particularly in the town limits of Rehoboth, always has somebody that they can call and count on. Um, we have a great staff of volunteers as well. These are the guys that aren't at the station twenty-four seven, but they're quick to always answer that call in the middle of the night. Um, and so for us, it's just something we have prioritized. I have our fire chief, Mick Floyd, here. He's worked super hard for this as well. And then our public safety director, Clark Phillips, was instrumental in making sure that this happened for Rehoboth. Uh, we came a long way in a very short period of time. And then Mr. Jim Tyson is one of our council members. And we wouldn't be where we are without the council really getting behind this and making sure that fire safety and EMS was a priority for us. Um, that being said, the county also had a major role in that. One of the main things that they look at for ISO rating, and a great thing to come on, is training opportunities that you have. Uh, we recently built a fire training facility. The county actually did dirt work for that. They did the pad for that. And it's allowed us to have some opportunities outside of the normal nine to five work day for these volunteers to really get their hands on and, and kind of get that training that they need to be certified in different things. It's also allowed us to kind of reach out to young people who have partnership with the county board of education. They have a fire training, um, fire safety program that didn't have that hands-on learning tools that now we have there. Um, and so we've seen since that facility was opened that their program has doubled in size. And so what's that, what we're doing is creating a desire for students to become career firefighters. So we're really excited about that. I can't commend you guys enough for the environment, um, that they have built and kind of, people are wanting to come to Rehoboth to be career firefighters, which is something we weren't ever sure we'd achieve. We have students coming out of school that we're sending to fire school that are going to end up being career firefighters for us. And it's just been a complete one eighty, um, in the direction, I think, of the morale of the department. We're waiting this now for people that want to serve for us full-time. And that's kind of a really big deal for a town our size. So I can't commend these guys enough. Thank you guys for partnering with us for that. Um, the southeast quarter of Houston County is really, really extremely vast in fire safety, um, fire, fire safety. Protection of our residents there has to be a priority. And so you guys, I think, have come a long way for that. So thank you for that.
There's also a safety on insurance, I'm on insurance.
Yeah, so this should help some of our residents. It should help their insurance ratings. It means that there's always going to be somebody at this station, and insurance companies look at those things when it comes to response time. So I'm hoping it saves our residents, we're hoping that, you know, when you have to make a call, that you don't want to make somebody who are very, very quick, less than five minutes to answer. So, um, they've done an extremely, did a great job of this. We have, you know, the Lawrence County School as well. So there's also kind of that weight in Bergen that we want to get from them in the event of our busy.
Outstanding job. So let's, I say we get, um...
I need to give a shout out. We have Jason here with, uh, Houston County on your fire situation. They were instrumental in this as well. They donated several props and were very, uh, have just been very supportive of the town of Rehoboth and their fire department.
Let's take a picture. Jason, you want to, why don't you come up here? Show my standing side. I gotta do it right.
Yeah.
I love it. Good news, good news.
That's right.
Uh, you know what? I should have grabbed this because I gotta step down again. Y'all circling with that line. Alright. Red ribbon, make a move. I tell it come up.
So move.
Oh, yes.
Second.
Before that, a motion by Commissioner Harvey and Secretary Harry. All of them say ayes. If they're saying ayes, pass. Thank y'all. Alright, I forgot the last. Uh, I, I'll be, I'll be with you. Whereas substance misuse remains a critical issue impacting communities across the nation, raising health, safety, and future value. And where the harmful effects of substance misuse could see heavy of the rising attention rates. Devastating consequences of drug overdose, particularly among young people. And whereas responsibility to come, to combat this growing problem lies with all of us, parents, educators, law enforcement, and community leaders, working together to foster a drug-free environment through prevention, education, and sport. And whereas organizations such as the Three Three Four Prevention Project, and Three Three Four Youth Council, also, also known as the Houston County Substance Abuse Partnership, have been the forefront of these efforts in encouraging healthy, drug-free lifestyles through the tireless, tireless work and dedication to our community. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign serves as a symbol of our united commitment to preventing substance misuse, celebrating, celebrating across the country during Red Ribbon Week, on February twenty-first to October thirty-first. Now therefore, I, we're in the chief of Houston County Commissioners to hereby proclaim on February twenty-first through thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as Red Ribbon Week. Houston County, we call upon all citizens who join the events and activities that are awareness, prevention and education on the dangers of substance misuse. Let's work together, let, let us work together, not only this week, but throughout the year to build a strong, healthy, and drug-free community for future generations. So, alright, I'm going to present that to you, and I'm going to go back to make all the comments that you and your team would prefer.
Good morning. First of all, I'd just like to thank you all for the unwavering support from the Houston County Commissioner's Office through the years, not only to the Three Three Four Prevention Project, but also to the campaign on this Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week highlights, highlights the importance of living a drug-free lifestyle. Throughout this week, those who choose to participate will participate in activities such as dress-up days, balloon releases, eating red Krispy Kreme donuts, and dance horse parties hosted by our mascot, the Drug Free Dancer. I have a red bracelet I would like to present to you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
This year, Almato Business decided today to walk away. You have a choice. Next week, at each participating school and, at each participating school and business in the wire grass, these bracelets will be given out in replacement of the little red ribbons given out in previous years, in hopes to be a much easier keepsake for children. Students will also be encouraged to participate in a pledge to live a drug-free lifestyle. We gave this bracelet with the idea that someone finds themselves in a situation of pressure. They will see this bracelet and be reminded of the pledge they've made, not only to themselves, but also their community. While Red Ribbon Week brings lots of fun, while Red Ribbon Week brings lots of fun things to participate in, the whole reason it, it exists is due to a serious problem that happens right here in the wire grass. Most look over the fact it doesn't take a lifetime for a substance to enter addiction. It takes just one use. It's just one hit. It's just one drink. I'm not addicted. I'll quit eventually. It doesn't affect other, anyone other than me. It all starts with the choice that you make today.
Like this. You know, I know a lot of you are here talking about, well, it's just, adults say they're not using substances, including alcohol. It's just a belt to be, a belt, telling us because, uh... And you can ask two deputies that are concerned on this condition, probably, what percent of all problems related to drug and alcohol that y'all dealing with?
Well, it's probably ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent. So, no one plans to be a drug addict. No one grows up and, I don't hear a drug addict. I can't, like, so much. I can't, I can't imagine, you know, you see people on the street that used to be somebody's little boy or little girl, so, um, to have the youth come here. The cool kids, motherfucker, doing other things. So I just want to congratulate you for being here, for, for what you do for children. So, congratulations.
Happy birthday, brother. Appreciate it.
Alright, that is awesome. I love that. Now, we're going to move on to the boring part of the, today, the regular agenda. Uh, item number one is a request to adopt resolution to comply with Alabama Open Records Act number twenty twenty-four dash two seventy-eight, and approve accompanying procedures for accepting public records requests.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Harry, second by Commissioner Adams. We'll call up, uh, Counselor Preston Register to talk about this because there has been a few changes. The, the original packet that you got on Thursday was what come from the ACCA, correct? And then, uh, Press had a chance to review that over the weekend, and he's made a few suggested edits. I'm going to get him to go over those. I just didn't want y'all to think that what you looked at on Thursday was what we're going to be approving today. Uh, I think the, anyway, I'll let you explain the differences.
General, what you reviewed on Thursday, what's presented to you today is substantially the same thing. There's just a couple things. You know, where sometimes to make sure the language lines up, definitions are the same throughout, the wording is correct, um, that it follows through with what also is occurring in Houston County. Just, or run through this, but as of October the first, the public record law has changed. If we now are abiding by that rule, and one of the parts of that law says we need to put in place procedures to make sure that people that are requesting records know where to go, and then we have a proper process to do the response. The new law puts time limits and frames for responses that was not available or present at all. And so one of the key things for the county is to make sure you follow to the proper person because there are timeframes by which we have to not only acknowledge a response, but then turn around and respond. And so we designated the Chief of Emergency Officer as the public officer for purposes of getting these requests followed into the county because once every request is submitted properly, we're on a time clock to make sure those things are responded to, uh, recorded together. And that, that takes time, practically. And so making sure we get the right person. And then there are also obligations that the law requires that we want to make sure, clarify this is how to properly present and have a record actually be able to be responded to. The law requires that a resident, the, the proper party to ask for a request, the law says that as an Alabama resident, they need to advise us. So one of the practical issues is how are we going to know that the person is now our resident? So we've laid out in the policy that they have to come in and present identification that shows they are who they say they are, and that they are a valid person. This is just following in with the law, but there are practical, on-ground things of where does that person need to show those documents to? And what are we saying is a proper process for that? So, the policy tries to make the process very clear for everyone. Uh, the other part is you need a form to make sure that the record request are being directed to the right person, as well as what is being asked. The law puts in place that the record requests are supposed to be particularized to records that are available and not just essentially, I want all the records from the last two years. That, that's too much work for anybody to deal with. And so we laid out a form that's provided for all the citizens to have. One of the questions that I think the commission needs to sign is, under the old policy and the current policy in effect, we need to repeal and replace that with this new one. Uh, there are reasonable fees that had in the past been articulated. That was a former page from the record. And then the time it takes for a person, the proper person to get those records together and make sure the records are properly responded to, that takes time. And the law says, and we are allowed to have that cost paid by the citizen in order to get their records. Uh, so it's one of these things where the purpose of the record is not so that we just constantly have somebody, employee, to make responsive records, as well as, as you can imagine, a record request comes into the county, but it's a state, it's for personnel or it's for broken bridge. There's a particular person that would be best suited for finding those records because they would know the answers to those, uh, where those records exist. That particular person's time is the one that's thrown at this. Uh, what I would recommend, and what's been presented to you in the sale, is to state in the form the cost for each page, as well as that reasonable fee related to the hourly rate of the person that is going to be responding to the records is part of the cost in terms of responding to it. That's a commission's choice. The number, a quarter, is a number that we've had now for probably seven to eight years. Um, we particularly... Um, we particularly and specifically are exempting any other departments that are, have their own kind of record keeping. The main one for us is the probate office. Probate has, they charge a different set of fees, and we're, our policy, the record response to this is separate and distinct from something like asking for a copy of the deed at the probate office. Other than that, this policy should follow what the ACCA has written. Again, notes, I would say no subsequent changes were made to that policy review on Thursday. Just, I thought it's easy for us to make sure everything lines up, as well as fits for what the county has previously been doing so that most things don't have to change for citizens asking for that.
So I have a question. You just, I didn't think about it till now. So this, uh, this policy applies to the entire county, including the, um, probate department. But what's accepted is the fees. The fees don't apply, or, or is it the policy doesn't apply to the probate department?
The, technically, the policy would still apply, I would say, but they are able to respond to a record request if you go up to the second quarter.
I know they do that.
They can just turn around and hand it to them.
Gotcha.
They don't have to go to that process.
Gotcha.
It exempts any particular department that has their own kind of standard.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, okay. Alright, any questions from the commission?
Is there any documentation that is going to be kept up with as far as who files a open record? And what the meaning of the, of the record is as far as if it's a deed or if it's something else? Uh, we got any means of keeping up that, your figure or you search?
That's part of the purpose of the form. They're supposed to submit that as well, definitely, personally, their identification, again, to make sure that they are an Alabama resident as according to the law. So we would have that, copy that form as far as the probate office, they would use that form.
Just to clarify that a little further, Commissioner, there will be a log that we will keep that will, so that we can track the day in, response date, that sort of thing. Um, it does, there is a provision in the new law that if a, uh, I can't remember the exact language, if there is a record that is going to take a significant change or a significant amount of time, we respond in a certain period of time, and we're given a little bit more time to respond to that record request. But there will be a log. It will be maintained on the sixth floor.
A law that finds a time intensive request and then separates that out from a standard request where that may, um, as you can imagine, sometimes these questions, and they're, they're fair questions, but they become very difficult to actually honor all the record related to execution.
Any other questions for the commission?
No. Chairman, I guess, is, is we, main thing is, is what I think our counselor is saying too, is we need to come up with a figure, a dollar figure, what it's going to charge and make sure we're going to stay, keep it the same or what? I guess for you, Peter, is there something out there that's a standard of what the charge per document, or is there, you know?
Well, as, as the, uh, as the, uh, press indicated, that, um, we have always used twenty-five cents a page, eight-five-by-eleven sheet paper. Um, the ACCA did not indicate any sort of a set charge in their template that they provided, primarily because there's probably a variety of, of in counties around the, around the state, a variety of costs. Um, typically what, what we do is we use a twenty-five cents a page, and then whoever it is that is going to be performing the task of getting that information gathered and then reviewed and redacted if necessary, because there may be some, uh, personal information on there that needs to be redacted. That person also, their time is valuated, and we, we look, what I do is I look at the full cost of that person, salary and benefits and, and et cetera, because that is what has been given up from the county's, uh, from the county's payroll, if you will, and dedicated to this project. Um, and typically that is going to apply to the records being, um, uh, obtained. Uh, we get a, we get a sort of a, uh, deposit from the individual making that request. And then if, at the end of the period, if there's more time that we incurred than we intended, they, they pay the balance. If there's not, we refund the difference to the, uh, individual.
Brenna, is there a yearly cap cost of said records?
It's whatever, whatever it costs. I mean, we need to comply with the law.
Gotcha.
Before and now, um, and whatever it costs, it costs.
Gotcha. Okay. There's been some confusion mainly among the citizens that sometimes, just because the government may have, there's, there's a difference between just general information and then records. I know we, we have that with a current issue we have going on. They've asked for information. Well, information is out there. It's not a record. They can provide that themselves. We don't have to, we don't have to go on fact-finding missions to, you know, help somebody in a case, uh, but we do have to provide the records, uh, that we, that we have, so. And I think this, this law is, I mean, my understanding is it's been a good step forward, a long time coming. Alabama was last in the nation when it come to access to rec, government records. Because, you know, they could request it, but, you know, we really didn't have to respond at any meaningful time. You could kind of respond a year from now, and we would be within compliance of the law, which is not, I don't think that's fair. So, um, this does set some time limits, and it does make all governments, including the Houston County, more accountable to the citizens that we serve. So this is, it, it's a good step in the right direction, and I know, um, Senator Arthur Orr has worked on this for a number of years. I think earlier versions of the bill did present some problems that we had some genuine concerns with, like, an earlier version built. We'd have to hire someone, then all they would do is government records because the timeline was so stringent, you know, had to turn things around so quickly that chief administrative officer couldn't do that, and, you know, we can't call Barclay and, um, tell him to stop what he's doing and respond to requests for information all the time. So I think we do that enough of him, as it is just us versus the public wanting information. So anyway, I think it's a, a good deal, so.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Um, item number two is a request to donate two thousand twelve Chevrolet Silverado Crew Cab four-by-four to Bay Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ivy and second by Commissioner Harvey. Questions on this item? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number three is a request of, uh, excuse me, a request to approve preliminary plat for Whispering Creek subdivision.
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Herring and second by Commissioner Adams. Questions on this item or discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number four is a request to award bid for hot asphalt plant mix to lowest bidder meeting specs.
Motion.
Motion by, I'll say Commissioner Adams and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item number five is a request to award bid for a two-minute surface treatment to lowest bidder meeting specs.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herring, second by Commissioner Ivy. Any questions on this item or discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion passes. Staff reports. Mr. Chief Administrative Officer.
Mr. Chairman, no reports today, sir.
Good. Mr. County Engineer.
We have five closed roads, three are due to pipe replacements, that water, Crawford, and Bravo, and two are due to storm damage.
I haven't heard anything about, um, you know, roads being closed from the storm in terms of people getting frustrated. I know we have that sometimes, um, any timeline on.
These two roads is closed is, um, Sherman Brunson Road, not but just a few people live on the road. And it, it, it was a perfect spot. Everybody could get to their home, no issues, talked to the local, uh, Mr. Brunson, he says it's fine. And the other one, Leo Pines, the only drawback about it is, is farmers, you know, with their equipment trying to get shore away, but the, um, it's manageable.
Good, good. I know, I've had some roads when I was a district four commissioner, it's, sometimes they'd be closed and people would be howling the entire time. Sometimes they'd be closed and people would be telling us to take our time because they didn't like the traffic that would come down the road. Mr. County Attorney. Okay, there's no further business, so this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.